Okay. Good evening. I'm gonna bring the meeting to order. It's May 27, 2014. This is a meeting in an operating school committee. The first order of business at all of our meetings is public input. If there's anybody here that would like to be heard, please identify yourself, step forward, and we'll listen to any questions or comments you may have for the committee. Okay, that's the usual result. There's only ... Yeah. We have our student reports. We have two seniors tonight, Matt Layton and Madison Capazudo. And last week, I think it was Thursday night, they received awards at the annual awards night at the high school from the school committee. Madison's been with us for three years, which I think...
That's...I don't know if anybody's been more than three years. I think...
No. So Madison's been here three years, and Matt's been two years. They've done a terrific job. As I said Thursday night, they make us very proud when they present. They're so professional, so poised, that they make the school committee look good, and that's not easy to do. We're generally a little messed up, so I mean, it's a huge improvement. So this is gonna be their last report. They're doing it together, and I'm gonna turn it over to Madison and Matt.
Okay. So we would first like to talk a little bit about what went on at the beginning of the week, last week. On Tuesday, MASCERS and SAD, which is Students Against Destructive Driving, a club at the high school, which I actually think there's a branch of it down at the middle school, if I'm not mistaken. But the high school branch held the bi-annual mock car crash, which took place just between where the high school is and where the batch is. It was a very touching assembly, bringing tears to many people's eyes. Boston MedFlight landed one of their medical helicopters on the baseball field, which is something that obviously we hope and we don't see every day. And Matt and I were actually talking earlier, which was one of the aspects of the entire thing that we thought was one of the most memorable and certainly the most emotionally impactful, just because, you know, the whole thing, thanks to, of course, and all of the performers and the parents and the public officials who were present that day made the whole thing seem so very real. But I think that when the helicopter landed, that really brought a message to a lot of students, staff, obviously. But yeah, it's a big, a big deal last Tuesday morning. And always, of course, a big thank you to everybody who was involved, because I think that it certainly did get the message across. And no easy task to do something like that. So we're very grateful to have such dedicated town officials and people within the school and in the community who care enough and put in that type of time and effort to put on such a great program for us. So then we're gonna move into what went on last Thursday, which was the induction of the National Honors Society. And there were 68 new members of both the junior and a few members of the senior class. And it was so big that we actually, the returning members actually couldn't even wear the robes. That's how many we had. So we had to give them up for the inductees, which was actually really cool, because it's always nice when there's such a, such a large amount of very talented and very dedicated students. As we know, like, there are many criteria that need to be met in order to be inducted. So I think it really speaks to the kind of kids that are in North Reading High School, that there were so many. Last Friday, which was the day after, the annual variety show was held for the very last time in the Daniel H.J. auditorium. The show featured an array of acts, including Notorious, the school's acapella group, the high school chorus, the jazz band, piano students, and MASCERS. It was a great show and a great way to finish up all of the memorable performances that have been held in the auditorium throughout the years.
And then following that, last Wednesday was the annual spring concert. Following that, last Thursday, like Mrs. Venetia mentioned earlier, was the annual spring student recognition night. There are so many great and deserving awards giving out. I would have to report that all student representatives on the school committee received at least one award. And both Madison and I just wanted to thank the committee for our star award. It's very nice, sitting on my desk with pride.
The paperweight. It's very nice. I like it very much. Thank you.
Is that what we're...
Truly, truly. It's really neat. I've never...
I picked it up, so...
It was, it was almost like a, "Here, you're an adult. Here's a paperweight." Like, one of those things. You know what I mean? It was cool. It was really cool. I'm used to, like, flowers or something, but it's like, "Oh, this is cool."
Yeah, just so you know, none of us have gotten that kind of, "Here, you're an adult."
Yeah, well, hmm, good to know. It was very, very nice, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. And then last Tuesday, Nick Selfridge, Angelo DeSanto, and Joe Lennon attended the luncheon at the Boston Globe for their first-place win in the annual stock market game hosted by the Boston Globe. The boys competed in the game throughout their, through their introduction to business class, taught by Mr. Sullivan. There were over 1,000 teams from across state participating in the event, and the boys cannot believe that they came in first. So big congratulations to them.
Wow, that's awesome.
Have the numbers?
No.
I'd like to call him and see if he has two seconds.
Wouldn't we all?
Yeah, I remember when I did this game my freshman year. We didn't come to school, so... But it's amazing that they're learning this so early in their education.
You see, I don't remember playing it, but it might just be a repressed memory for me, honestly. I don't like numbers. I like words and songs and things. This upcoming weekend, the Ryla Program, which is the Rotary Youth Leadership Awards, are being held at Camp Rotary in Bauxford. This year, North Reading is sending five students from the high school, including juniors Jackie Lanzaro, Matt Stead, Tyler Stansberry, Erin Casey, and for the first time, a sophomore, Michaela Sweeney. I actually attended the program last year, and I was not looking forward to it, to be completely honest, because I was not about the whole cabin-in-the-woods thing. But I do have to say that it was one of those things, I came back and I was so glad that I went through with it, because it was such a fabulous program. And though many of the things that they try to teach you and try to have you leave with were very similar to some of the, you know, the student council programs and the programs that, you know, student rep may attend, it was just presented from the total opposite side of the spectrum. And so I think that those five are in for a really great weekend. Today, any underclassmen who currently does not have a parking permit at the high school can apply to have one, which, yes, big, big steps.
Big transition.
Big steps. To start, only 50 permits will be issued, but they will be, more will be given out at a later date, and the spaces will not actually be open until, obviously, the Monday following graduation.
Yes. Senior finals begin today and will be administered until Friday. After the last exam on Friday, which will be at 10:10, there'll be a half-day for seniors following a meeting at 10:15. Next Monday night is senior prom. Grand March will begin at 5:30 at Sir Drifer Park by the gazebo area, if anyone wants to come out and enjoy, followed by prom at 7 o'clock, which is being held at Tewksbury Country Club this year, and we're looking forward to it. Next Tuesday night is spring sports awards at 6:30 in the gymnasium.
And then next Wednesday, the senior barbecue and yearbook signing will be held from 5 to 8 in the high school cafeteria. We're having Mr. Lee and the horseshoe cater, if anybody would like to stop by. Next Friday, obviously, is graduation, the last one held from the current high school building. The ceremony will begin at 6:15 PM and will hopefully be held on the field.
There's no, there's no hopefully. It will be held on the field.
Yeah, Ross, Mr. Bernard is very adamant that if there's light rain, we're still gonna try to get you out on the field. So we're just hoping for...
Last year, we were in doing...
Yeah, last year it was...
That was the first time in several years, I believe.
But it was pouring. I think the year before that, it was misting a little bit, and the year before that, it was sunny, so hopefully the gods will be on our side.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
All right. So for sports, big news from the girls' track team. This weekend, the team competed in the COWLS and came in first place. Junior Cole Kazinsky won the 100-meter hurdles. Senior Nicole Roberts won the two-mile. Senior Emily Murray won the shot put and discus competition. Senior Emily Visconti won the 100-meter dash. Also, the girls, the North Reading Girls Shuttle, shuttle hurdle team and sprint medal league team will compete at Nationals this year, which are being held in Greenville, North Carolina in June. So congrats to both teams representing North Reading at the national competition. This is the fir, this is the first time in a long time they competed in Nationals, so it's a big, big achievement, and they shall be proud of their accomplishments. Boys lacrosse held their senior night game last Wednesday against Wilmington, in which they came out with a 14-3 win. They are in the playoffs and will face Penn Tucket this upcoming Saturday, 5 o'clock up in Penn Tucket.
I'm next. Sorry, we're a little lengthy tonight. Okay. Girls lacrosse had a tough season this year, going 5, 11, and 1, finishing up their season last Wednesday against Wilmington. On a happier note, the baseball team had a game yesterday against Triton, against whom they won 11 to nothing, making their season record 16 and 4. They are now in the playoffs with a bye week for the first game. They will face the winner of Bishop Fenwick-Water Town game being played on Thursday, and they will be playing that game on Saturday at 1 PM at Cary Park. The softball team finished their regular season with a record of 14 and 6, and they are playing in their first round of the playoffs on Thursday at the Little School against Swamp Scott.
And the girls' team, girls tennis team, had a very successful season, finishing second in the division with a record of 11 and 4. They'll play Thursday at home against Watertown. Same with the boys. They also had a very successful season, finishing 10 and 4 and coming in first place in the COWLS, the COWLS for the division. They'll be facing Watertown as well on Thursday in the first round of states. So a lot going on this time of year. It's very busy.
Everybody says, you know, when I see my family, "Oh, you know, are you happy that things are winding down at the end of the year?" And I'm like, "What? Winding down? Everything gets more busy at the end of the year." As you can see by this nice, lengthy report. So for student work, we actually, since we're not really working on much right now, other than kind of studying for finals and wrapping things up, we snagged one program from the student recognition night the other night that we figured you might wanna flip through and pass around to see. Of course, certainly. And also, Matt and I, instead of presenting something physical, would also like not only to extend our thanks and our gratitude to the entire committee, but also to Mrs. Willis, as we wish you good luck, and we wanna thank you so much. I mean, I know Matt's been on for two years. Like we were saying, I've been on for three, and we would not have wanted to do it with anybody else, truly. So it's been awesome, and, you know, the kids next year and the years to come will hopefully not miss out on too much, but certainly on that little special touch that you have. So thank you very, very kindly.
And I think, yeah, I think I can speak on behalf of all the students in this district. Having a superintendent who's really involved and really cares about this community, especially with so much effort put into the school building project, that just shows the effort that you have for giving to students. And I was listening to your speech the other night about you come to work every day for the students. And I don't know, without you, the community would not be where it is today. So thank you. That's all I can say. So thank you for all the work you put in to make this community a great place to come each and every day to learn.
Yeah, it says a lot to us that you trust us enough. You know, we're gonna carry you all someday, and...
Can you ask me that?
So...
But for some of us, it's very soon.
You know, it's great. It's just, how's that song go, "The Circle of Life"? How's it go?
It's perfect.
I'm looking forward to you guys carrying us. I mean, I...
You have some very sensitive old people.
Yes.
Any comments or questions for Madison and Matt? And again, we're gonna miss them, because they've done a tremendous job.
I just want to say you guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as Mrs. Venetia said, you and our other student representatives make, I think, the whole committee proud of the way you present the information every week and your student work.
Your appearance, your demeanor, everything about you.
Exactly. You guys are great. Wish you good luck. I did wanna add one thing. Our sports teams, this might be the most successful spring we've ever had. We won about 70% of our games in the spring, and we have five teams in the states. And as they said, the girls won the Cal championship, and we have two teams won a Nationals. I can't remember the last time we had that. And we're in fourth place in the Dalton Division III standings in the Globe...
Which is about 40 teams.
Out of 40 teams, yeah. So it's been a great season, fourth place.
Great.
And... Love Janine, I think?
Just remember it's commencement.
Yeah, that's true. That's very true.
I wanna know, when the helicopter landed on the baseball field, did Coach Carey charge the helicopter?
No. No, they actually didn't. Someone mentioned to me, though, they, they said that, they were like, "Oh, my God, if that thing were any closer in the dust, he would have, like, his little minions out there."
His minions.
At 205, with their rigs.
That's true.
He would, he would.
It's a good thing he was. It's a good thing he's not teaching anymore.
Yeah.
Well, again, Matt and Madison, thank you very much on behalf of the school committee and the superintendent.
Thank you.
Really appreciated your efforts, and we're gonna miss you, and good luck in September.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And as a final... And the final pie and gift, you know you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
It's a toe bar. He insisted on driving me here tonight. He said, "Do you wanna stay?"
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna jump ahead on the agenda, and the next item on the agenda is the Young Americans Tour presentation. I believe they were here six years ago. I think it was a great success. I know a number of operating students participated. We have Allison Kane and I think Halla List are here to make the presentation. So the floor is yours. Why don't you come up and identify yourself?
Hi, good evening. I'm Allison Kane, and I am a teacher at North Reading High School and the MASCERS Club advisor. So yes, six years ago, we brought a group called Young Americans to North Reading. They are a national performing group that tours all over the country and all over the world, and they come to invigorate music and theater within our schools. And we had approximately 275 students from North Reading participate six years ago. They do tour every three years, so we thought every six years would be really cool, if we can get them. So once the building project started, I contacted them and said, "We're gonna have a new building, and it'll be our sixth year. Can you please consider us?" And a couple weeks ago, they finally contacted and said they're gonna be here, and they're gonna be in our area in the fall, and would we like to host them again? So what they do is they come in, October 19 is our scheduled date, and they would arrive on a Sunday and meet us at the high school, our new high school. And then we would have workshops that afternoon. They stay with people in town, so you kind of host them at their house. You host two or more young Americans at your house. There can be up to 46 young Americans that tour, between 36 and 46 students and adults. And they stay at your homes at night. They come back, and then all Monday would be workshops all day long. And they're everything from singing and performing and acoustics and television and acting and technical theater, a little bit of everything, to kind of reach out and show the kids the breadth that is performing arts and the fact that they can do this in so many different venues. And then Tuesday, same situation. They have some workshops and a dress rehearsal, and then they'll perform one of the most amazing shows that these kids prepare for in only two days. So third through 12th graders is who we like to invite. And by Tuesday night, everybody's happy and have this fabulous adrenaline kick and tired. And then they leave Wednesday morning between 7:30 and 8:00. And the young people who travel do it again in another town that very night. And they're fabulous role models and, and individuals, and I'm really excited to have them back next year.
Allison, I don't know if all's missing, if the kids participate, then they're gonna miss two days of school.
They would miss two days of school. They'll actually be in school. They'll be in the Performing Arts Center, taking classes all day.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, any questions of Allison regarding the Young Americans Tour?
I just wanted to get a comment. My daughter participated when they were here six months ago. We actually had, six years ago, we actually had one of the performers and one of the adults stay at our house. It was the greatest, first of all, the performance they did, they did two performances, I think, a matinee.
And we're gonna do the same thing.
And we were in the gym, so you can imagine, it wasn't a great venue for that performance, 'cause the old auditorium is too small. It was awesome. Both the, the kids from the Young Americans are incredible. They're so talented. But then our kids, as part of, it was unbelievable. Some of the kids you never expect to be, you know, be able to sing or act or whatever. It was, it was just great.
Yeah.
So it was, it was one of the best things, and the community just embraced them, and it was, it was, the gym was packed.
I think I actually went, too. It's the first non-sporting event I've ever been to.
You did go. Yes, you were there.
Yeah. No, it was pretty fabulous. We're gonna do the same thing, a matinee and an evening performance as well.
Anybody else? Any questions for Allison and I?
Well, like Mel, I also hosted the students to stay there, and all three of my kids actually performed in it, so they had a blast. I was exhausted. The kids were exhausted. The students were exhausted, but it was so much fun.
Good.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty, pretty exciting. MASCERS is gonna kind of sponsor them to get them here, just to start it off. And MASCERS is gonna host one of the dinners for the kids, just like we did last time. And actually, Chartwell's is gonna be the one that we work with to do that.
Now, just one question.
Yeah.
By October...
Yeah.
Are you gonna have complete mastery over that whole auditorium sound?
Of course.
You are.
Of course.
All right, okay, I just wanna make you up, 'cause I'm glad somebody's going.
Yeah, we're right on that.
Sound light, everything, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, if there's no further comment, no further questions, we'll take a vote on whether or not to approve the Young Americans Tour as presented by Allison Kane.
So moved.
The motion by Ms. Araketti, the second by Mr. Bowles. Is there any further discussion? Karen, none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Motion carries, but a vote of 5 to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great.
This is a happy year.
Yes. So, so fun. It was happy until right now. The next item on the agenda, as I think most people know, and as Matt and Madison made very clear, Superintendent Willis is retiring in October, and we are in the process. Dr. Araketti, I'm saying that once a meeting at the most, that's it.
Okay.
And Mr. Webster, actually, as a subcommittee of the school committee, have already put in a great deal of time in trying to frame the issues that we need to deal with with choosing of the superintendent. And they were both here, along with myself and Mr. Bowles, for the, who chose Superintendent Willis. And we went through a process at that time, and Mike Gilbert from the Mass Association of School Committees came in at that time and helped us out a great deal, gave us some advice, kind of sent us in the right direction. And Mike's here again tonight, and I'd ask him if he would mind taking the floor and, you know, at least discussing with us what we're looking at, Mike, and I think Karen and Mel did a good job of this, is trying to look at the pros and cons of an internal search and versus an external search. And if he can kind of give us some direction on that, it would be appreciated.
Sure. First of all, it's great to be back in North Reading. It's been a while since I've been here. I'm very impressed with your students, as I was in the search. They were terrific, and they still are, so I love coming here. The, let me talk a little bit first about what the atmosphere is like in Massachusetts for superintendents right now. When I started doing this job almost 20 years ago, we'd get 100 applicants for every superintendency, and we'd have a difficult time cutting that down to eight to 10 people for a search committee to look at. Even as, as nearby as, as two years ago, we're getting 40 applicants. Now we're getting 20. And it's not hard to get down to that eight to 10 to, to, for a search committee to look at. I mean, it's even less difficult, I think, for the search committee to get it down to the two or three or four folks that a school committee would look at. So one of the things that we've been working on over the last couple of years is trying to talk to school committees and communities about the one thing that we do a really bad job of in public education, and that is succession management. We know that the, the average length of term of a superintendent in this state is between three and four years, and they either move on or they, or they retire. When people become superintendents in this state, generally, they're in their 50s, they're close to retirement age, and in Massachusetts, when you add the number of years to the age, 57 is about where most administrators and teachers retire. So, you know, if you're, if you're hiring somebody at 53, 54 years old to be a superintendent, there aren't as many folks who are gonna stay 10, 15, 20 years anymore. So when you have somebody internally that you can recognize as having the qualities that you want in your superintendent, has the skill set that, that you desire, it's almost a no-brainer to have that conversation with your community about why you're choosing to elevate somebody from another administrative role into the role of superintendent. A smart superintendent has done their homework in terms of helping their administrative team to acquire the skill set and the knowledge to move into those roles. And, and so I think that's, that's sort of the bottom line here, is there aren't a lot of people out there who wanna do this job. There are, it's a difficult job, and so when you have somebody, A, who wants it, and B, who is qualified, snatch them. And as I said to Mel earlier, if you don't, I will.
Noted.
Because trying to find quality people to become superintendents is, is a very difficult job today.
Questions for Mike?
I have a question. You normally, I know Linfield just hired a internal candidate, I think Swamp Scott Marblehead, I believe. Do you normally see, do they go and they tap a person on the shoulder and say, "We think you'd make a good superintendent," or do they normally open it up to a formal internal search?
I think it, it depends. I think even in places where an external search goes on today, we tell school committees, "Have a conversation with your internal folks first." You can post, you know, post the job and see if there's interest from other administrators. I, I think it's only fair that, even though you may have somebody in mind, that you open that up to the people who, who are administrators in your district. As I recall, you sort of had that conversation internally when you hired Kathleen. There, there were a couple of people who were sort of toying with the idea internally at, at that time.
I believe one actually made it to the final three, and then she ended up dropping out, and she's now Superintendent Manchester in Essex.
And Manchester, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So, so, you know, there's, there is that, that sort of competitive nature among your own administrative team, too, as to whether they're, engage the interest and see whether there's somebody internally who has that interest beyond the person that you may have targeted.
Yeah, and I think, just, just a quick comment, Jerry, I think that, that's the, you know, the way that I, Karen and I have been thinking about it as the subcommittee for the, for the school committee here, but I think your point is well-taken, that public education does a horrendous job of promoting from within. There's always this thought that you have to do a global search. And then you do a global search, we did that last time, we got a great superintendent, but sometimes you do a global search and you notice, all of a sudden, you're losing two or three administrators from your district, and you wonder why, and it's because you didn't give them serious consideration for the position that they might be qualified for. And I think we have to, you know, be cognizant of that issue as, as we move forward.
I, I think the piece sometimes, too, that, that happens is, certainly not the case here, but I've had cases where there's been a superintendent who's been superintendent for a while, the needs of the district have changed, and there's a tension between the committee and the superintendent about the direction of the district. Superintendent decides to leave or go somewhere else, or school committee pushes that change. When that happens, we also have a tendency to look at that person's administrative team with the same brush as we do with that person. That's not a good thing, because oftentimes, you may have candidates in your district who will voice their own sort of roadmap for the district with the administrative team, but will never both voice that in public until they're given that opportunity without, you know, without the, the caveat of, "This is the superintendent, who's my boss."
Right.
So, you know, you may have somebody who, who you think has this particular mindset that doesn't really.
Right. Correct.
So getting an understanding of where they're at in terms of your qualifications and what you're looking for becomes important, too.
Okay.
Mike, thanks. What's the downside of doing, in our case, an interim superintendent and doing the national search, which would then encompass all of our internal candidates anyways?
Because we're looking at an October date for...
That's one, is you're looking at, you're looking at an October date, so...
So we're looking at an interim because of the time, timing in the year for a search. I remember that from the last time we went through the process.
Right, right. I think if you were to go through the full-blown process, there's no way you can get it done before October. So, that's one issue. I think if the decision is that, you know, we don't have an internal that meets our qualifications and our needs, and you've got to go outside, then you need to have that discussion. How do we, how do we make this happen? Do we, do we use somebody internally as an acting? Or do we go outside and bring in another, another party as an interim? The difficulty with interims is that you, in order for most retired superintendents to work, they have to, they have to qualify within their pension system, based on a certain number of hours and a certain amount of money they can make in a given year. In order to qualify for a waiver from the department, you have to have a failed search, a failed external search, before you can get the entire pool of interim candidates in front of you. So that presents another difficulty. You know, you can go either way in terms of the discussion about whether a full global search with internals included, or simply doing the internal search. What's, you know, what are the pros and cons here? Some people say, you know, "I'd like to, I'd like to be able to hold up this person against other people." That's not really what a search is about. Search is about finding the person who is the best fit for your district, who meets your qualifications. If you've already got them in the district, why would you go through that process at expense of bringing people in from outside?
How do you know that that person is the best fit that is available?
Well, you never know for sure.
Right.
Okay? But I think if you have a good handle on what the qualifications are, what you want, and I believe that most school committee members know their communities well enough to know what the community wants, then you bring that person in, you interview them, the internal, you interview them. You ask them questions about those qualifications and what it is that you want, and you gauge their answers, just like you would in any other search.
That's the question. Being devil's advocate, I know where Cliff's coming from, I mean, we did the search last time, we went through the interim process, then we did a, an external search, and in our opinion, you know, we hit a grand slam with Kathy.
Sure.
So now we're arguing a little bit against ourselves here as to which way we go, I mean, because we had such great success with the other way of doing things. But I'm just being the devil's advocate. But the next question I had is what Cliff touched on. The process, then, to do an internal search would be similar to what we did for an external, set up a committee, and vet the person as far as...
I don't know that I would, you know, that I would go as formal as setting up a separate search committee.
Okay.
Given the fact that you're likely to have less than five candidates internally.
Yep.
It would probably be a matter of the school committee saying, "Okay, these are the people who put their hands up and want, you know, want to be the next superintendent in North Reading, from North Reading." And bring them into the school committee and interview them in public.
Interview them publicly and...
Yeah. So, you know, that shortens your process. You don't need, you know, you could do that. And first of all, you don't need to do siphons, it's, they're all here.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
You bring them in, you interview them, you can do this in a week.
Public process, would you recommend, obviously, public input or...
Sure, I would, I would, I would want, you know, the process to allow for some community input to the school committee about, to sort of validate what it is you think you know. And for some community process as part of the interview, whether that's a sort of meet and greet prior to a formal interview, or whether you choose to allow members of the public to ask questions as part of the interview. I would tend to think the meet and greet is probably more likely, because you want to, you want to target what you believe the qualifications are in your questions. And as much as the public has an input into the process, sometimes those things can go off track.
Right. Right. Any other questions for Micah? Kathy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I agree with everything that Michael is saying. I think you all have a really good sense of what you're looking for, and you reflect the community by virtue of where you sit. So I think Michael has described the process as I would imagine it.
What if we just took a picture of Kathy and put that under the qualifications?
Not so much.
Boy, her head gets bigger every minute.
I have too much work.
Mike, really appreciate it. You'd be accessible if either Karen or Mel had to give you a call or anything.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, one of the things we'll do as an association is, we will provide you with technical support along the way with the process. Should you choose to go outside, we'd be happy to help you with that for a fee. But internally, we'll help you wherever we can. We have a resource documents, for example, a question and answer guide for you to develop questions, those kinds of things, that we'll make available to you. And anything we can do to assist, we'll be more than happy to do.
Right. I've recommended your services to at least 10 different communities on the list serve. When they ask, "How do we go about a superintendent search?", I go back to our, my personal experience in, in the search process. And I said, "There's only one way to do this." And I end up by naming you, so I guess I have to live by your directions.
All right, well, I appreciate that, Cliff, and I thank you for your, for your confidence.
We couldn't have ended up with a better deal.
Exactly.
Well, it couldn't be better. It'd last longer.
There you go. I thought she was going to stay longer, too.
And we're way, you know, we're way over, Kathy's bringing us down seriously here, but we're way over the average. We've had three superintendents now in 49 years. We had Dr. O'Donoghue for 30, Dr. Troughton for 15, and now Kathy will be a little more than four. So, you know, we feel fortunate that we've had some nice consistency, and we've had some really tough superintendents and leadership, so, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to blow it this time.
No.
I understand that.
Mike, thank you very much.
Great, thanks a lot.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Kathy, it's always great to see you.
Good to see you, too. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to talk about this now, or do you want to...
Yeah, I do want to talk about it now, just briefly, I don't want to keep you guys waiting too long, just give us some, but I'd ask Mel and Karen, based on what you presented the last meeting, where do you feel we should be going here? What's your recommendation?
First, I want to thank Karen for taking on a lot of the load on this. I've been editing stuff, but she's actually done a nice job. I think that Karen and I strongly support initially doing an internal search. One thing we don't have tonight is a timeline. I talked to Karen, and I felt we probably should agree to a timeline as a, as a committee, because we don't know what the, what the best dates are. Karen has already put together a document that I guess would go online and go out to the internal candidates, as well as, now, we did have a search committee, Mike just talked about maybe not having a search committee.
Well, that's the thing, I, again, I think what's important, the first thing that we need to deal with is, are we going to do an internal search? That, that's the first thing, so I need to...
I think we're recommending that.
Okay, you're recommending, and all right. How do you guys feel about, Janine?
Oh, I'm set with the internal search.
You're okay?
I'm global.
You're global?
Yeah, I believe we may very well have an internal candidate, but as I, I think I said in our last meeting, from my view, we should be looking at the universe and see what we can find. And if that turns out to be an internal candidate, that's great. But it may very well be that there's somebody else out there that will satisfy our...
Yeah, and like I said, I was devil's advocate on that, because I think if you look at the result, I mean, obviously that process worked for us in the past, but I do think, you know, and I don't think it's ever a good time to be hiring a superintendent. I think there's always issues that have got to be dealt with, but I think it's critical right now, and Mike just said it and verified for me, that we're going to have to get an interim before we find a person if we do an external search.
Right.
Which means we're going to have two transitions. And we did it before, and it worked out, but I think we're just, you know, with the school building project and everything that it encompasses, and everything else the superintendent's got to deal with, I'm not real comfortable having to make two transitions, unless we can find an internal candidate. If we don't identify somebody internally, then I think obviously we go to the next step. But I think it's, it's worth taking a look at the internal candidates, and as Mike said, if they satisfy all of what we consider the job requirements for that position, then it may not be that difficult a choice for us. But I respect your opinion, Cliff, because it's hard to argue against the result from the last time. All right.
Can I just make a comment?
Good, Karen.
So I've spent a great, a great deal of time looking at the different searches that have occurred over the last couple of years, and just looking at newspaper articles, and obviously, Mike presented a little bit tonight about the pool. There have been a lot of failed searches, and they have been external, and some of them have been internal. And for me, it comes down to what would we lose by trying an internal search if we could accelerate it and do it quickly? It would at least answer the question, do we have someone who is, who is going to align with the qualities and competencies that we as a committee agree with the community to make this position what it needs to be for our district? So I think we can answer that quickly. It was interesting to hear Mike tonight say that you can, you can turn that around relatively, like doing interviews in a week if we have several candidates. I'm not sure we have more than one or two people interested, but I don't know.
We don't know.
Correct.
So, but if, if we do, then we could rapidly answer the question, do we have an internal candidate? And then, having answered that, then go external, and then we haven't lost very much.
And I think we all agree, we'd want to post this, so that internally, so that we're not looking at just one person, we're looking, we're going to post it and see who's interested.
Yeah. Otherwise, I agree with Cliff that there is no other way to find a high-quality candidate but going out farther. I would love to believe that the administrative team that we have cultivated over the last four years, and for some people, much longer than that, they've been here a long time, that among them is interest and potentially a good candidate that will fit us. We haven't, you know, vetted any of them for this type of role before, but if they are truly interested, I would like to give them the opportunity to go through the process without sort of competing against, you know, others, because the scrutiny, I think, is a little bit different. Do you think it's...
Yeah, no, Jerry, and I think to Karen's point, we don't want to rush this, but I think based on what Mike said tonight, we can do this quickly. I can see, knowing within six weeks...
Less.
Or less, whether we have an internal candidate and someone that we want to offer contract to. I can honestly see that. And then, as Cliff says, if we don't have anybody that we feel comfortable with at the community...
We haven't lost that much.
We haven't lost that much time, and then we go for the interim, and then we, but I'm with you on, there's a lot going on, and while we, we lucked out with our interim the last time, you just, you just never know. I think we had a great interim last time.
Huge number of failed searches.
So we have a consensus of four members in favor doing the internal search. I think the next step, then, is, the document that Karen's presented looks good, but obviously none of us have had a chance to review it, so...
Do you mind if I just walk in a little bit?
Well...
So, I just wanted to say, I don't think tonight is the night for us to go through this, because I've just given this to you. But what I did is, Cliff graciously gave us the document that we had from last time, and I just put in the qualifications selection criteria. We tweaked them very slightly and added a few things. But there are a couple of questions I'd like the committee to consider for our next meeting. One is the, it's on, it's the qualifications and the salary and contract. We will need to determine what range salary we wish to post. We just put a placeholder in of 150 to 160, because that's what we had before-ish, sort of. But if we were going internally, we may want to reconsider that, given the tenure and the length of some of our potential candidates. Another question, are, are there criteria that aren't here that you would want to put in? For example, should this person have been in the district for a certain period of time, or should there be no years, for example? I put X number of years having been here, but that may not be necessary. Is there anything else you want to point out here?
No, and I do think, we do have another meeting prior to town meeting.
Well, we have a meeting prior to town meeting. We also have a meeting June 9th, and I'm thinking, I'm thinking what we could do, and again, it's, I don't think we have to rush this, but we could meet on June 2nd prior to town meeting, instead of at 6:30, meet at 6:00, or we could wait till the June 9th meeting. How do people feel about doing something on June 2nd? And what I'm asking them to do is to review the document that Karen's put together. I think it's very good, I think we, some of the questions she's posed are good ones. And I think the other thing that we would want to do is to put together the top, potential timetable, too.
Yeah.
So that we can either, again, do this on June 2nd or June 9th.
If people think they can review this within a week's time, I'd rather do it the 2nd, maybe start at 6:00 rather than 6:30, if everybody can make that.
I think, I think we should start at 6:00.
Can we do 6:00?
Can we do 6:00? Is everybody okay?
Janine, can you do 6:00?
The grand march is at 5:30. I don't know if anybody was intending to go.
On June 2nd?
Yeah.
Are you going to the prom? Oh, I don't, so, can you be there?
Well, I can, but if you wanted to watch the grand march, it might be a little difficult.
All right, but you don't have anybody that's...
No.
Okay, all right.
We can have the meeting while we're at the march.
Okay, so let's do this, let's schedule the meeting for June 2nd prior to town meeting at 6:00 P.M.
And if Kathy can't be there to start, that's fine, because you probably want to be at the grand march as superintendent.
Yeah, so we can work, we can work on this document, and we can also, you guys can start to put together a timeline consistent with doing an internal search.
Okay.
All right.
Question about the search committee, obviously the other document is a proposed composition of the search committee. Should we have one for internal?
I think we need to talk about that on the 2nd, I think that's important.
I agree, but to take a look at it, we did put the previous committee composition there.
Yeah, no, I think it's important for us to consider the process.
Okay, so that'll be the library and high school?
Library and high school. Should we vote on the...
Yes.
On the position of doing an internal search? Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion that moving forward, we're going to conduct an internal search for the next superintendent of schools.
I'll make a motion that we conduct an internal search in, in an effort to find a replacement for Superintendent Willis as superintendent of schools.
Okay, and we have a motion by Mr. Webster, do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Embriano. Any further discussion? Karen, none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries by a vote of four in favor, one opposed. Okay, good job, guys. Excellent. Next on the agenda, we have representatives here tonight from Chartwells, and they're going to give us a food service program update, we've got a lot of talking about this. We have Anna McGovern, the Director of Food Services, we have Chris Callahan, the District Manager, and I think that's Kim Gunn, the Client Relations Representative. So guys, come on up and...
Before we get started, I have water, and we'd like cold water and some fresh fruit.
Oh, my goodness.
I tell you what, Anna knows how to run a...
I've noticed this one.
Nothing fried?
French?
Nothing fried?
There's no, we've got lunch.
I know, I know, last year we brought a whole spread.
Yes, that was good.
Better read some.
I miss that.
I'd like the fresh fruit, but I don't think it's any good for us.
Tonight it is.
I put in my coffee underneath.
It's up back, do you want me to get some?
Yeah, no, why don't, why don't you let them make a presentation, and we'll take a break afterwards, okay?
Kathy, we're not a waitress.
No, go ahead, good, guys. Good, the floor's yours. The mic's involved.
I'm just calling up their presentations, it might take a minute, but feel free to...
Well, thank you very much. As you mentioned, thank you for introducing us. My name is Kim Gunn, and I'm with Chartwell School Dining Services. And I'd first like to thank you for the opportunity, for the opportunity to serve you in the past. We sincerely appreciate the business here in North Reading. We also want to thank you for the opportunity to continue serving you. Your vote of confidence is very appreciated, and again, the opportunity to share with you some accomplishments and our vision for next year and the year after is very much appreciated. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so we're going to keep it very, very brief, but most importantly, we do want to thank you for your business. As I mentioned, I'm Kim, and you may recognize these familiar faces with me tonight. Anna McGovern is your On-Site Director of Dining Services, and Anna's role is to make sure all of our cafeteria staff, your cafeteria staff, have all of the tools and resources necessary to execute this plan that we're proposing for next year and the years on out. Chris's role as District Manager is to support Anna and to make sure she has the tools and resources necessary that we can continue to exceed the desires of the district. And my role is really another communication resource, to sit down with you six months from now, a year from now, ongoing communication to make sure that we're exceeding these expectations that we've set forth tonight, we set forth last year, we set forth six months from now. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris and Anna.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim.
So, the next slide here, we've already went through that a couple times already, which is good. But just some of the accomplishments we wanted to go over. It's been a very difficult two years in our industry, as you all have known, and I know last year we probably met three or four times to review some of the impacts that the new regulations have had on most of our districts, and specifically in North Reading. But this has been a very good turnaround this year, a good rebound, with all the efforts from Anna, first staff, and I got to tell you, I appreciate Mr. Connolly, too, his support over the last year. We met very consistently every month, and that's been very, very helpful, you know, sharing ideas and keeping everybody on track, so I hope to continue that next year as well. But for the deficit reduction, we're in good shape, we're on target for what we proposed last year. I think we're about $30,000, $40,000 less than the year before, so that's, that's a good, that's a good trend. We've increased program sales. One of the things we've really done throughout the district was our Chef to Schools was a big hit. We did it every school. I think, Mr. Bowles, you were there at one of the events, and it was a combination of presenting our food, educating the kids on certain things, certain foods that they're eating now. And it seemed to get them involved, so it was really helpful. And we plan to continue that going forward. Student surveys was big, we did the iPod survey, Survey Monkey. We added a new menu concepts that we reviewed last year that were very helpful. A couple more, the Just Say Cheese was one of them.
The Asian Nation.
Asian Nation was a big one too. So we'll continue, as you saw, our proposal, some new creative ideas as well, which we'll see further on the presentation. Again, we weathered that storm last year with new regulations. There are a few changes, a couple of changes coming up this year. Not the impact we had last year, but I think sodium this year. I think that also it's 100% whole grain this year. So again, we're doing most of that as it is now, so it's not a real big change for us. So the kids are getting used to it, you know? Like anything else, we're changing habit in our schools. We actually, Anna rolled out a new website for the school district, the end of last year. That's worked very well for communications. The other thing we've done is actually we really control our program costs. I know we actually massaged the staffing levels based on enrollment last year. That's really helped out. Anna and her team has really done a great job on controlling food costs. We were able to maximize our volume allowance rebates to the district, which has helped out a lot too. And with a combination of those things, we just managed a little bit more effectively, efficiently this year. And again, as I mentioned, the regular meetings with the business office has really helped out as well.
The Chef to School, like I said, like Chris had said, we've done it in five different schools. The Bachelorette Elder, we did whole grains. The Little Elementary School, we did pumpkin smoothies, cinnamon apples. And what I did was I showed the students that most of this was a lot of the products that we have every day. So we encouraged them to come up and try them. It was all different types of apples. The middle and the high school, we did Chef to, we did Asian Nation. And they had egg rolls. And at the middle school, every student, every student came. Every student came up because we offered it. At the high school, we thought, geez, maybe we can get this and serve it as a lunch. And we did have a good participation also on that day too.
So middle school, we sampled it, we did samples.
We did samples. And at the Hood Elementary, we also did yogurt parfaits. So, and we sampled that. And the reception, you know, they were very receptive with all of that. And we asked them what they wanted to see, what they wanted to eat, and it was the same. You know, we want pizza, and then of course you get a little bit of the filet mignon, that's what they'll tell you. But I said, well, we would like that too. There's no question, we would like that too, but we can't. So this past December, there was, the athletics department did a Christmas hoop, and they had all the teams come in. And we were asked to do a catering for that. So we did that, we set up that right in front of the gym. We did that. And every year, there's a local code drive. So I said to the staff, look, whatever we don't have, you're not using, bring it in. So we did that. I think we probably collected about 20 coats just from the high school. We also have our yearly annual scholarship for a deserving senior at the high school.
And I almost mentioned his name, her name, it wasn't that.
Right, I just said, I said, the person hasn't been told yet. I said, so please do not mention the recipient's name. So, and every year, North Reading is part of a decathlon in February. Since I've been there, we, schools from all over the state come in, and it's all day on a Saturday, and we provide lunch for all of them. And it really has turned out to be quite an event. And any of the staff that, they're so excited to work, and I put it out there to begin, who would like to work that day, we get on the list, and that works out well too. So we are trying to build more revenue. Also, this next week is a SLAM, that's Student Leadership Academy and Mentoring. There's two days, and the students are going to be out of the building. And I talked with John Bernard, and we're going to capture those lunches. We're going to bring lunch to those students. They are students, so we'll be able to claim them. It's a win-win for them and for us.
There's great news about the young Americans too. That's a great event.
Yes, that's.
We did that six years ago, and it was fantastic. We catered that dinner.
Right, she came up, she approached me yesterday. So she says, will you be able to do that? I said, we'll be on board, just let us know what you need. So these are our Chef to School events. The upper left is the Bachelorette Elder. You can see the staff was there. And I believe in the middle, I can't see.
That's the, that's the smoothies, pumpkin smoothies at the.
That was at the Little.
And then the Asian Nation.
Asian Nation was, on the right-hand side, was Mary Palito. She is the cook manager at the high school, and her and another coworker from Chartwell's.
We had a chef.
A chef. Yeah, there were chefs at all the schools. And they came in and they talked to the students a little bit about what was best. Did you like apples? Did you like pies? And what we have and what we offer.
Gave away chef hats to the kids.
To the elementarys.
They love that, so.
So we made it, you know, they enjoyed it, which was good.
So we would be okay if you brought them and gave us chef hats.
Next time. As long as you wear them before meeting.
Yes, the entire meeting, okay.
Absolutely. So we, I'm striving to continue our deficit reduction. You know, I watch those numbers, if not weekly, daily. I have, you know, I know that I have Chris and I have Mike, and we all have to be, I have to be accountable, and we're doing quite well with that. I think the student satisfaction is, has come up because, as Chris said earlier, the students are now accepting the new regulations. They're trying different things. You know, years ago, we had all those fruits and vegetables, they were like, oh, oh, but now they see it every day. So, and I tell them, when I'm doing the line, I say, you know, I'm a parent, I'm a mother. You can't go, you know, with that. You need to have some color on your plate. So.
Getting them involved too is important, so that's really important.
It's working out well. And again, I think the staff is also happy too. They know, they enjoy working here. I mean, we have an excellent staff here at North Reading. I'm very, I'm very pleased.
The common goal is the students. You know, as long as they don't lose that focus, you know, that's, that's why we're here. Getting them involved, making sure that the focus is, making sure we serve them the students the most nutritious, well-balanced, something that they like too as well. Big key next year is a successful opening for the middle and high school, both happening at the same time. And we'll have support here, helping out with that. We know the schools. This, we think it's going to really kind of drive some of the excitement at most schools. Even the new high school, even that middle school going to the old high school. You know, that's going to be something to do for them too as well. It'll be more efficient for us to service over there, at the locations.
Eric, can you do more at the high school, the middle school kids moving there? Are there better facilities than at the existing middle school?
The.
I just wondered, because obviously you have more options usually when you get to the high school level.
Right.
And the display?
Right.
How it's presented?
Right.
And how they come through?
Right.
So I'm hoping that anytime Kathy O'Connell, when she has orientation for any of the classes, I plan on having food service there. Because the students, even the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, they've never been to that building either.
Right.
So I want to get them all there, show them where to go, how to go through the line, what we offer.
It's more, it's actually, it's more efficient. It presents the food better. We have the open air screen coolers, where it's easy. Simple things like, you know, at the middle school, they have to slide the door open to get a beverage and switch and pick it up through. Here, the new, at the high school, old high school, it's an open-air case. It's very, it presents well, it's easy grab, so it's a lot of things that, and we can actually do some more menu items there at the middle high school.
Okay, right, that's good.
Plus the equipment, some of the equipment at the middle school is old and broken. So a lot of the product that we had to make, we made from the high school and sent it up to the middle school. So we won't have to do that. We can make it, oh geez, would you like to throw the lomé?
Yeah, that's right.
Good, let's do the lomé and not in right from the end.
So the keys, the keys actually really, next year is driving our top-line sales and continuing to control our costs. Again, the change in the high school, middle school is going to be good for us. The new high school, updating the serving lines, that's going to be great with a new school. We got digital signage, I believe, going in there. We've got, which is more of a college feel for students. So that'll help them communicate better for the students as well. Middle school moving into the newer space, equipment upgraded at this grade level. We upgraded Hood Elementary School. We did renovations about four or five years ago to the middle school. So we've got some equipment we're going to take from the middle school and bring it to the Hood School. Because right now, the Hood School is the only one that really doesn't have a really adequate line. They've got, we're going to put in new cold wells so we can display and hold the foods cold, their side dishes and their fruits and vegetables better. We've got lighting and stuff we're going to bring over to the Hood School to upgrade that as well. So we've got all the equipment. We're going to move it from what we renovated four years ago over to the Hood School.
You better have your crew on there on the 25th to get that out of there, right, Jerry?
Yeah, it'll be gone. Manafort will have it on.
I've scheduled with Mike Poole, our gentleman that does the work for us, hopefully to come in the week of the 16th to the 20th.
Okay.
June.
And I have a meeting with Wayne.
Okay.
Because there's a couple of ovens that are not working at the high school, the old high school, and I didn't have them repaired, but there were two ovens that are working at the middle school. I'm just pushing over.
That's the efficiency we like to.
We're just pushing over. We're just moving it from point A to point B.
Right. The breakfast isn't going to be new. And this is something we've tried over the last year or so, a couple of locations where we have a breakfast cart and bringing the food to the kids. You know, because a lot of times, at locations, it's not as easy, grab and go breakfast. They don't have time to go to the cafeteria and eat, so. And it's been very successful. We've got a breakfast cart scheduled to be built portable, so we can move around to capture those breakfast sales at the secondary level, which will be good. So again, that's something we're working with administration and the principals to make sure we got optimal serving time for breakfast. And it's big now. Breakfast is huge. It's something that everybody's embracing now. Principals, we're actually, I can't believe how many breakfasts in the classrooms we're doing now in the last couple of years, so that's been big too. So, and it's funny, we were at the John Stocker Institute meeting on Wednesday at DCU Center, and there was a presentation from Brockton Schools, the principal of Brockton Schools. And they rolled out their breakfast in the classroom, and she said, there's no doubt, there was no downside at all to that initiative. And it's just going great. So again, you look at different ways of rolling out breakfast, whether it's in the classroom or cards or, it really depends on your demographics and the systems you have in place. And then new menu exciting, new exciting menu concepts we're rolling out proposals, which I think we have some pictures here as well.
These are the food action stations. This is that we'd like to put some new, like the equipment at the Hood Elementary. It won't be exactly like that, but it will have lighting. The cold wells will work, instead of moving things in and out of the refrigerator.
Actually, it'll look better than that, actually.
Yeah, that's, yeah, exactly, it'll look nicer than that.
Here's some of the new concepts. Simply Good Breakfast is our breakfast program. Crave Smoothies, which has been a big hit for us last year or so. So we're going to, we're introducing those in most of the districts. Really big, I think, it was pretty big in North Reading. Smart à la carte solutions. Again, USDA is actually restricting à la carte now nationwide. Fortunately, they already did that in Massachusetts last year, so there's no really change for us. But we've got some new solutions from our vendors who've actually, you know, sourced some great products for us that meet the requirements, that are new. A lot of our vendors were waiting to see what happens. So now they're at the point where they're developing more products for us to offer to the kids.
Does à la carte have an impact on federal reimbursements? How does that work?
It's a balance, it's a balance, it's.
You try to get the students to.
Take one of.
Take the reimbursable meal and add to it.
Yeah, that's right.
So then you try to get both paying for your.
Yes.
If they participate in the programs.
It's additional revenue that helps program.
Okay.
And it's where you price it too is good. You want it to take away from the meal. Because you want it to offer for those students who may not be bringing, you know, buying the lunch there. They may be able to get a beverage or, but you've got to maximize it the best you can without affecting meal sales.
Right.
But, as Anna mentioned, we've got a lot of catering events too. We're building our revenues too. So that's going to help us out next year too. Chicken dipping, actually, we rolled it out this year and it's gone really well.
I did those chicken tender.
Yeah.
Well, at the elementarys, I did a chicken appetizer boat. One of the students at the Hood Elementary wrote a letter to me, and he said he really was interested in that. And I asked Glenn if this person, he said, he would love it. I sent him a letter, sent him a little coupon to get lunch, and chicken tenders, you know, the sauces and dipping. So he was quite happy.
Continue with communication. It's all about communication, getting to the students and finding out, you know, what they like, what they don't like, what they'd like to see more of, and what we can do. So along with the Survey Monkeys and the iPod surveys, which really worked really well. I'm trying to get the iPad surveys, so we can actually get the software. Because a lot of schools have the iPads already, you know? So maybe we can work with schools that, if you have iPads in the schools now.
That was a big hit.
Yeah. Digital signage is fairly new over the last couple of years. It's been big in colleges the last five years, but it's a great way to communicate visually to the students. Messages, not only what you're serving that day, or maybe the next week, or special events coming up. It's a lot of creativity with the digital signage. And that's, that's how students read now too. They look at that. Try to get them. Again, sample of like a breakfast cart or a cart. It's called, it's called Street Food. So it's a concept, Asian Nation, Casamigos, the Mexicans, and then our vegetable program there.
And the Casamigos is where we do our chicken fajitas, and we do our nachos and our tacos. That's what we name our station, so it works well.
This is actually just an outline of our, the high school, middle school, and how we actually plan to serve these stations at these schools. So we've already got a plan in place, we're ready to get in there and just shift things around and set it up. So we've got a strong plan, and we're just waiting for the day to get in there and start working.
Hopefully it will be soon.
Yes. Again, some of the community involvement, we continue to want to continue to support the Christmas hoop, getting options that, whatever we can do with catering, will be very helpful. Code drives, wellness fairs, if you have wellness fairs, we get involved with those too, having a booth or supporting that event. We'll continue our scholarship. We've got a wellness grant we've proposed. Again, that's due to be spent at the discretion of the district. You know, maybe beginning with your wellness coordinator on that. And maybe a grand opening, we actually proposed a grand opening for the new high school. Sometimes maybe not at the beginning of school, or maybe after it's open a couple of months. Right?
You might find that you'd like to do something.
Maybe a thought to set up the stations that night for open house, parents and command.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And I've always wanted to work, see if I can work something out with Ryers General Store. It's so popular, so anything we can partner with them, maybe to do maybe some local purchases would be helpful too. Nutrition Intern is actually something that's grown over the last couple of years. We've got two, three scheduled coming in. So they're going to be helping us with different studies, you know, plate waste, you know, the impact of the regulation is à la carte. So, and they're, you know, they're students, and they're actually, they're from Johnson and Wales a lot of times, and they actually are looking at our field. And they've been a great help over the last couple of years, so. To cap it off, just, you know, our commitment's there, always has been. We know what your goals are. We need to work with that and to continue forging ahead. I think we're pretty transparent. We've shown that, and again, Mike, every month, you know, anything else you need in our meetings, you know? Strong working partnership. It's all based on trust and, you know, continuity going forward, so with that.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the committee? Any comments from the committee?
I have one question. If you had experience before with opening new facilities like a new high school, and then you'll have both the new middle school and high school in a year from September, so you have two new facilities. Have you done that? So, you have two new facilities. Have you done that? Have you seen a pickup in sales?
Yes.
And, yeah, okay.
It's actually, it's a new environment. The kids want to try it. You know, it's not the same old, same old. So, they're very interested at that point to get in, we've got to get, capture them and get them involved and keep them. So, but it's, I've been, I've actually opened probably over 20 new high schools over the last 10 years. It's a good bump for us.
That's obviously what we're hoping for.
Yeah.
And the key is we want to get them in early. I want to be there for when they walk through for the orientations. And once I get them, it's like we said, we want to keep them.
I mean, I think we're generally pleased with Chad Wells. He has done a great job for ours. He really has. And, you know, the issue for us is whether it becomes self-sustaining financially. That's the whole bottom line for us right now. Otherwise, I think we're very, very pleased with the service and the quality of food and the representation, how close you work with the administrative office and everything. So...
We've just got to continue, continue that. We're on a good trend right now. So, as long as the USDA doesn't throw us any more big loops, but we're, you know, we're going back in the right direction now, which is good.
Well, Jerry, as Cliff has stated numerous times, and I've been right there with him, I mean, the whole challenge of a school system changing eating habits, which I just, I know you try, but, you know, kids get their habits at home.
That's right.
And so, in order for us to be successful, hopefully they're changing habits at home because, Cliff, it's a very small percentage of meals that the kids eat in school. You know, it's basically 180 lunches.
Eighteen percent, right, Cliff?
Something like that. It's a very small number. And so, you know, we do everything we can. You do everything you can. The federal government does everything it can. But sometimes I think we might have it a little bit backwards. And, you know, as you say, the kids, the kids leave here. You already have a partnership with Ryers. The kids leave the schools and they're mobbing Ryers to buy whatever.
And the sub shop.
Right, the sub shop, you know, the hornet's nest.
Hornet's nest, yeah.
So, but, you know, as Jerry said, we're supporting you. And I was on the subcommittee with Mike and John Bernard that reviewed all of the proposals. And we are impressed with your proposal. And we know the challenge to make it self-sustaining. But that's hopefully what the new school will get close to that.
And again, we're very pleased with Chris and Anna particularly.
Thank you.
The work they do. So, thank you very much. Let's take a quick, two minutes, that's all, and go get some water and some fruit. So, that, you know, they can take their stuff back with them. Just two minutes.
Can we get on camera?
We can.
Ready to resume, Mel?
On my count.
Like I said earlier.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Jerry, just FYI, this is the...
Oh, thank you, Mel.
See how close we got to fifth though? But look at Dexbury.
Yeah, very close to fifth.
Look at Dexbury. Isn't that crazy?
And they've got a lot of, they, more participation.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to resume the meeting and we're going to move back on the agenda to continue business. And first up is the MSBA SSBC project update. I'm going to ask Lieutenant Willis to comment on that.
Yes. Thank you. The SSBC meetings were held on May 13th and then again today at 5:30 PM. We did have previously a joint meeting of the school committee and the board of selectmen. And Mr. Sean Delaney was appointed to the secondary school building committee as a citizen representative. And Mr. Steve Oldery was appointed as the board of selectmen representative. So, I believe now we have 21 members sitting on the secondary school building committee in town. I wasn't sure if members of the committee wanted to provide an update based on our meeting today. I do want to say that I spent a couple of hours on Friday in the building. And it is, again, amazing. I am so impressed with the way that the, the design is coming together. The finishes that are taking place in the school really start to give it character around the design that was put in regarding the educational program. The auditorium is amazing. They've taken away some of the staging, the floor staging. So, if you stand in that area, you really get a perspective of just how impressive this space.
Or your fault for the floor.
Or your fault for the floor. I'm pretty careful about that. And then I managed to, in the auditorium, travel up the catwalk and beyond the catwalk to the back of the stage to look at the fly space. And just looking at all of the wires that have been pulled in that area is so impressive. I can't even imagine what that design process was like. But just taking a look at what the infrastructure is that will soon support something like the Young Americans coming to North Reading was truly impressive.
That's really fortuitous with them coming in October. That'll be a great way to show off that.
Show off, yes.
It will be.
And the intricacy back there in the auditorium is unbelievable. I mean, the weights, the...
I know.
It's really incredible. I don't know how anybody knows what they're doing, what they put it together. But Janine and Cliff, I know you guys are in there every week. So, anything further you'd want to add?
No. Well, go ahead.
Janine's still eating.
She's still eating.
Everybody else is through eating. Janine's still eating.
I'm slow.
Yeah, the weight, counterweight area is...
It's crazy. It's crazy. The way they set those weights and everything.
There's about, my recollection is there's 17 lines in there. And some of those lines will carry lights up and down, and some of them will carry curtains or scenery. And they're, it's very intricate. It's also a long way down.
Well, that's the thing with the auditorium now. You can get it in perspective again. As they start to take away the staging, you forget because it's a straight, flat stage. Now that they're taking away the staging, you can really see how steep and how, how high it is from the stage up to the, to the ceiling. It's incredible.
And then they've completed the, most of the clouds in the auditorium. And so, that's again, others, 14 basketball nets, an absolute forest of basketball hoops standing down in that area. The distance learning lab now, all of the concrete's exposed without the formwork that's taken shape. You see the tiered seating. And that, again, is a very, going to work out to be a very, very nice space. Classrooms with just about everything. One of the joys is you walk in a classroom and the lights go on.
I couldn't figure that out.
And, and they go out after you've been gone for a while. And so, it has all of those little features built into it that make it very neat. Lockers that are big enough to put a backpack in, not, not narrow ones, wide ones. So, every, every way you look, the, the structure is coming along and continuing to take shape.
I'd just like to comment, the science lab classrooms are as good as any college I have ever attended. And my daughter was a science major.
The science labs jump out at you.
So impressive.
The woodwork and the, and the workstations and the casework and the, it's just incredible.
And access to a board.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I think the most important thing is, we heard it tonight, just before, we were all at the meeting before we came here, and the most important thing is that we are on time.
Yes.
To open on September 8th at 7:30 AM sharp. So, we're on schedule.
Somebody call me that morning.
The, one, one other comment here. The DEP and EPA went through the wastewater plant and gave us a sign off on that. They were quite impressed with the process and have actually talked about perhaps using us as a model.
Really? They were that future? Good. That's good to hear. Okay. Thank you, Cliff. Next on the agenda is our school committee self-evaluation results. Every year, as people know, we set goals for ourselves as a school committee. And this is the third year that we've been doing the self-evaluation. A lot of work has gone into the self-evaluation forms and then the analysis of the answers and responses to the forms. I know when we started this, I didn't think it was, I thought it was a little bit of a waste of time, but I think it's really benefited the entire school committee because it makes you, it forces you to look at things and review areas of our responsibilities that maybe we don't think about all the time and to, to try to improve our performance in those areas. So, I think it's worked out really well. Dr. Arquette and non-doctor Gabrianna both worked a lot on this. And they, they've come up with some, some results as a result of the five questionnaires that we all filled out. So, turn it over to you, first, Karen.
Yep. And I'd also like to acknowledge that I've only been on this committee since we reorganized. So, Mel Webster actually tabulated the results. I haven't been on this committee. So, it represents a lot of work. And again, this is showing three years of data that we have collected, starting with the M A S C self-evaluation and making some amendments to it as we went. I don't want to say too much about this because I know you've all had a chance to look at your packets because I know you scrutinized them over the weekend before we meet, you know, to really get into discussion. But I will say that we have vastly improved our scores. Even with different compositions of committees, we have had shift in our composition over this period. We are a high-functioning school committee according to our self-evaluation rubric. We have improved on pretty much two-thirds of the items that are in, in the total number of items, this is a number of 46 items that we assess ourselves on a one to five rating. And we are, I'm sorry, we're zero to four. Zero to four, yes. So, we're doing very well. And the big area we excel in always is leadership and governance. We are incredibly good at being, being a committee and being familiar with the federal regs. There are a couple of areas that tend to sort of hit us up. And if you actually look, look through, there has been a little bit of diversity in terms of the areas that we don't do well. One area which always dogs us is professional development of our own school committee. And so, Janine and Kathy and I talked a little bit about this. And we thought that it might be a good idea for us to adopt professional development as something we do as a committee during our regular sessions.
Could you wait another year?
No.
All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, we thought, you know, self-evaluation is about goal setting. It's about sort of saying, okay, where can we go from here? And this really does frame up our goal setting workshop in the summer. But we went a little step further at our last subcommittee meeting and said, what can we do to kind of move some of these goals forward that have been a little bit of a challenge? So, the idea is that we would have, on a rotating basis, maybe four times a year, for each member to come at a meeting and present something they have learned that is new, that they want to share with the committee as part of our own professional development, as opposed to developing some curriculum or document that trains new members. But we refresh what we've learned from just literally reacting. We already do this, but this would be a formal way to bring new knowledge to the committee. So, food for thought. Other areas, I mean, we excel in a lot of different things, but there are a couple areas we could, we could improve upon. Number 27 ensures adequate allocations for professional development needs. This is, you know, low, I think, because we have different interpretations of what this category means. For some, adequate allocation means we make an allocation to professional development versus an adequate allocation. So, maybe this is low because...
You're talking faculty and staff here, right?
Yes, so for, for our teachers and our, all of our administrators and all staff. So, we should discuss this as a committee, whether or not this is continuing to be a priority, which of course we have funded in our budget, but not nearly at the level to which the N R P S 2016 requires. That's one area. Then just, I'm just going to, I'll stop talking in a, in a few moments. I know there was one other I wanted to mention. We have improved our e-signature system of signing warrants. I think the introduction of actually getting the invoices and the backup material has been really effective. So, that's been a success. And again, our communications to the community continues to be a strong point for us. With the exception of interacting with the school councils, there is still a challenge around what we do with our, these plans. And while they are, school councils are mandated to exist and are supposed to align with our strategic plan, which they do, I'd like us to, at least for me, when I went through this, I wasn't quite sure what we do with these plans. We, we listen to them and we approve them, but how do we internalize them or use them to set priorities? Do we use them at all? So, that's one question, Mel. So, with that, I will stop talking and ask for Janine to comment as the subcommittee member first and then open for discussion.
Thank you, Karen. Janine, Mel?
Yeah, there was just a couple other things on 32. It rates nearly, you know, at the, at four. But I guess I just wanted to point it out because it's, it's very hard to do the financial planning even one year out or more than that because our hands are pretty much tied with the amount of monies that we get in. So, we may have a great plan, the N R S P 16, but we can't implement it because we don't have the cash. So, it's, it's sad that we can't give ourselves a higher rate even on that.
That's a good point because we're, we're oftentimes much sitting there trying to figure out how much revenue we have and what kind of a budget we're going to establish for that next coming fiscal year, never mind one or two more fiscal years out. So, it's also a possibility.
And I'm like a business where we can maybe come up with a new product or cut some costs in the production line.
I think we came to this realization a while ago, that the only plan so far ahead is when it comes to the budget.
Yep.
For about a month.
Yeah. And then on 45, it's just more of a point, it's kind of rated low, receives and addresses school improvement plans. And they do come, I believe, at the end of the year with their improvement plan. But then we never have any feedback or follow-up. So, it would be nice to have the administration come back and say, you know, mid-year through, we, you know, we accomplished these goals. We have it on days and this is the reason why. So that when they come to give their improvement plan again at the end of the year, we have some, like a, like a progress report.
That's a good idea. And if there are areas where they're struggling, where maybe we can help them, maybe it's a budget issue, maybe, whatever the issues are, that's a good, that's a really good idea. We've never done that. It's a great idea.
Janine, second.
Any other comments? Thank you, Janine. Comments from Cliff or Mel?
I have one. I, I, you know, you can look at this, oh, it's a self-evaluation. Of course, they're going to give themselves good grades. But number one, Karen made the point, if you look back at 2011, 2012, and then where we are now in most of these categories, is a lot of them, I think you said two-thirds is a vast improvement. And I think we're an honest committee. And I think... And I think we're an honest committee. And I think if we aren't doing things well, we're gonna say we aren't doing them well. And reading a lot of stories about other committees in Massachusetts, we're really functional compared to many other school committees. And I think that this is an honest assessment. We do a good job. We listen to each other. If we have issues, we try to work them out without things becoming acrimonious. And I think it accurately reflects this committee.
And again, just so people know, we grade ourselves basically in four different areas. Leadership and governance, educational programs, financial and asset management, family and community relations, which is, we've really improved in that last one.
Right.
Over the four years Kathy's been superintendent, I think we've really reached out through the transcript and through other means to communicate with the public and to get input. I have one question and we'll move on. The issue I had was on number twenty-three. Just for discussion purposes, refrains from involvement in administration of the school system. And there's a comment there that somebody wrote, we can do better. And I noticed that the overall, the overall grade went down from three point six to three point two-five. So just curious, I mean, that's something I kind of think the committee takes pride in, is knowing that line of demarcation from, you know, what our responsibilities are and what the administration's responsibilities are. So if there's some issue there that somebody's got on their mind, I'd like to, you know, hear it so we can deal with it or improve upon it, if anyone wants to comment on that. I forget what I gave her a grade on that. I'm not sure.
I know, I was low on that one.
Okay. Is there anything in particular?
But marginally, like, you know, the difference between these categories is something like, we do it, we do it really well. You know, like...
I just didn't know if there was a concern that somebody would have.
My overall, my overall comment on the whole thing is that as we've moved along these three years, we have improved, and I think Mel has just said that. And the grades have been progressive in almost every category.
They have.
And that, I think, is a good thing.
Yeah, I think we've gotten consistent. I know the first year, two thousand eleven and twelve, the grades were lower. But the last two years, two thousand twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, actually forty-four percent of the grades were the exact same as the year before, which means that consistently we were satisfied with a lot of those areas. So...
But in many of those, we were four.
Right, exactly.
Four, and so you can't get more than four.
So I think this, again, I think it's a good tool. I'm glad we're doing it. I'm not sure that every school committee's doing something. I think we were one of the first that was out.
And do it consistently. I still try, struggle with the question, what makes us successful as a committee? Because especially when I was doing the research on student attendance...
I think it's the leadership of the chairman.
You've been chair of this for five minutes.
Yeah, you see, already, look what's happened.
Two of these three years, Mel was chair.
It's a love fest. No, I, what I think, though, is that if you ignored the grades we give ourselves, the fact that we go through the process reinforces what we're supposed to be doing as a school committee. So whether we give, if we give ourselves ones, we'd be in trouble, obviously. But it says to us, these are the things we need to be focused on. And just by doing, by going through the process, I think that helps a committee become a better committee. And I think, you know, I, you know, maybe there are more categories, and I know the committee meets every year to determine if there are more questions we want to add. Maybe some questions can come off, but I think we should continue to do this.
Well, I think it's interesting. The first year we did this, we were kind of tough on ourselves in some areas, and we've improved in those areas. Yeah, so Karen and Janine, good job.
Good job.
Thank you. I think it worked out well.
I think we should give some more credit to the lady at the end of the table.
Superintendent, how much more credit can we give her? I mean, really?
She has a, so we have more staff. So Kathy, do you want to?
Kathy, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sure. I was just going to ask Dr. Arakety if we were gonna talk about the summer dates, maybe try to set our goal-setting date now.
Yes, and we did talk about at the meeting, and I actually don't have them in front of me, Kathy, do you have them?
I believe it was August sixth.
Yeah.
Do you have that date, Janine?
Yeah, August sixth with the backup of August thirteenth at six o'clock.
So this is otherwise known as Jerry Manetti Appreciation Day, where we set goals.
Thank God I'm on vacation.
Yes.
Thanks, Janine.
I think, what do we, time do we say six?
Six o'clock.
Six.
Does that work for everybody? August sixth at six PM?
Cliff is going to...
I'm just gonna do my day of that day.
All right, six oh five.
Very good, Jerry. That's quicker.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday. That's good.
Cliff, would you prefer a Monday?
All days are terrible in the summer.
I know.
Well, I think we had thought that you usually leave on Thursday and come back on Monday, so Wednesday's the perfect day, right?
Yes.
I can pick a day any day.
You prefer Wednesday?
I don't care.
So the sixth?
Sixth.
Six at six.
Six PM.
Yep.
Goal-setting. Is something to look forward to?
Cliff, Jerry will come pick you up.
Okay, anything else? Moving on. Next, Department of Education Sheldon English Inversion Program Update. That was going to be delivered by Dr. Patrick Daly tonight, and it's been postponed. And Kathy, you want to go June ninth on that, or?
That would be great, yes. Due to the length of the agenda this evening, we decided, I talked to Mr. Manetti earlier today, and we thought it would be a good idea for Dr. Daly to come to the June ninth meeting and make a presentation. At that same meeting, Dr. Daly will also be making a presentation around our PRC.
Yep.
So he'd be here anyway.
He's here, that works good. Okay, thank you. Next, policy manual review, first reading. Policy Subcommittee's done a lot of work on policy KGA and KGAI, and this deals with the use of school buildings and grounds. And over the weekend, I had the option of reading the new policy of War and Peace, and I chose War and Peace because it was short. So who's gonna lead up? Is this Mike?
Yeah, do you want me to?
Okay, this is Mike's first novel.
Right.
But honestly, I actually read it. There's a lot of work going on. It's very good. So do you want to review?
Yeah, I can give, I can.
Okay.
You only have two minutes.
I can involve some preference, well, some background. Essentially, when the policy subcommittees, you know, sat down and started to review their current policy, it really came to our attention that, you know, in light of the new high school coming online next year and the middle school the following year, that there was certainly a need to kind of provide some additional detail in both the policy as well as in the corresponding rules and regulations that had existed. Really to not only protect the school and the town from any, you know, potential liability when we do rent out our space, but it was also to protect the, you know, the town's investment in the new buildings. So what we had done is, we, you know, reviewed the policy and the rules and the regs. We went through a study of some comparable districts in the area and that had recently opened up some new buildings and looked at some of the rules and the regulations that they had in place. We, you know, certainly involved our insurance company as well, the town insurance company, to look at what was kind of best practices in terms of liability language and, you know, certificate of insurance language that should be in place. And we did look at kind of best practices out there in terms of reaching out to, you know, my affiliation, the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, and looked at what type of, you know, language should be in place, you know, in particular around the rules and the regulations when we go to rent our school space to outside, you know, groups. So this policy and the revision certainly make reference to, you know, a lot of required state and local town regulations. It tries to, you know, go through and provides the detail that outside groups would certainly, you know, need to be in place to really protect the school and the town. So that was kind of the process that we went through. And, you know, we started off kind of just trying to make, you know, revisions to the existing, you know, KGA-R rules and regs. And then when we, you know, got into it, we really decided it kind of needed a whole entire kind of revamping, and that's what led to the, kind of the eight to nine-page document that is in existence. Attached to the rules and reg policy, KGA-R is also comes with a revised facility rental fee schedule. And we had started this discussion back, you know, that was back in the fall, and there was actually a subcommittee that in particular looked at the facility rental schedule that we had in place and the required changes, given the new spaces that would be coming onboard next year, as well as the need to do a benchmark study of comparable communities and districts and try to see what the market, kind of industry standard rates are and what, you know, what could need to be changed as we looked at our facility rates, which had not been addressed for the last, you know, four or five fiscal years. So that is also part, is involved in this policy and the revisions that have taken place. The memo that I, kind of the front cover memo that I provided in your packet, kind of goes through what I just went through and the process that, you know, the policy subcommittee has gone through. It also involves kind of four bulleted points on the second page that I think was the goal and the objective in particularly looking at the facility rental schedule, in particular when we looked at this policy. I just want to highlight those briefly. We certainly wanted to review and compare our current rates with comparable school districts in an effort to bring North Reading's rental rates more in line with market standards where appropriate. We wanted to review and list any additional new spaces that would become available with the opening of the new high school next fall. That certainly spaces that may have a rental demand, and we wanted to review and do our research and come up with and recommend a fair and equitable rates of such space. We wanted to also make an effort to maintain a fair and equitable balance between providing community groups affordable space while ensuring that the rates that we would recommend are also closer to market standards and that will insist in covering our operational costs. So we felt that financial piece was important. I think, as you may recall, this was also one of our budget goals when we put together our goals back in the fall of the FY15 budget, was to take a look at our rental rates and see if there was additional, you know, revenue that could be gained. And then the fourth objective was to continue to ensure with whatever revisions we did make, that the community groups that in particular those that benefit, certainly the students of North Reading, with whom we've had longstanding relationships with, will continue to receive priority over other kind of out-of-town or for-profit groups. So that was kind of the background and the preference of the process that we kind of did, did kind of go over over the last several months. I think there was certainly a few meetings with the policy subcommittee. And then the subcommittee that looked at the facility rental schedule sort of handed that off to the policy subcommittee after a couple of meetings as well. So I think we felt comfortable and confident to move this policy forward for our first reading this evening. What was also included in the packet was your current policy, followed by the revision. And as I said, it does provide more detail. But again, I think it's detail that is certainly needed. There's been, certainly my office was very much involved in, you know, the accountants that, in particular, you know, Maggie Riley Dalton, who is managing the facility scheduling and the rental and the invoices, had a lot of historical knowledge, been doing that role for fifteen years. So she is certainly was a big part of going through these rules and regulations. I certainly very much appreciated her input throughout this process. So these are certainly, you know, something that she felt would, in a lot of ways, make her job easier as she attempts to communicate, you know, certain rules and regulations to the outside groups to not only protect the district, but as well as the town interests and ensure that the, you know, the insurance is there as well as our space is used. At that point, I can't turn it over if there's any other particular question. I know this...
Who in the policy subcommittee? Cliff, you worked on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, comments.
There's a couple of comments I haven't, first off, there's ten pages here, but the first page is actually the policy, and then there are eight and nine altogether pages.
Regulations.
Regulations that go along with that, and that's typical of our policies. The last page where we have facility user fees, that is to be amended after this meeting. It has two columns that are gonna be taken off, the current fee schedule and the change. Those two columns are gonna be eliminated.
So this will be incorporated as part of the regulations. Okay.
So with that, Michael's done a fantastic job of pulling this together.
That's unbelievable. Did you copy this, or did you do this yourself?
So, I mean, I had actually...
I mean, you drew upon other...
I drew upon other districts. I actually gone through this process about three or four years ago in another district, so that was helpful in using that, those resources.
Really good. The only thing I'd say, Mike, on page one, and this is, I don't think it's quote, but the not, under authorization, the not-rearing school committee authorized is the not-rearing business. Should it say school department, business office?
Are you looking at the R I Ms?
Right, first page. I don't see that.
Under authorization?
I see on number one.
Yeah, number one.
Oh, first page is red.
Just to put in school department, business office, I mean, just...
Yeah, to clarify.
All right, got you. And the other question I had is, do most of these organizations already have a million to two million dollar public liability policy or personal injury insurance? Is that common?
So I think that is why, actually, that's a question that I reached out to our insurance company with the town and the school, Amaya, that oversees, and asked them, what, I actually asked them, what would you recommend go into our rules and our regulations when we, what should our insurance requirements and minimums be? And they felt it was important that that mirrored what the town is requiring when they rent their space and their, the field and so forth.
Correct.
So we actually looked at the town's requirements, and that mirrored what the town is requiring, and they felt that was an appropriate insurance requirement to have.
I'm just thinking in terms of if that becomes problematic. Again, I don't know what to anticipate with different groups coming in, but I think we can deal with that as we go. I mean, I know to get that kind of insurance coverage, it isn't, it isn't a huge cost, a huge premium. I'm guessing a lot of these organizations already have it.
And they cover it in the fees, too. When the kids sign up, that's part of the fees to cover the insurance costs.
Right.
All right. Jerry, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
How different are these regulations than what we have now? There's a lot of things in here that, there's a lot of steps that the groups have to follow to get there in order to rent the space. Are these pretty much the same in terms of how many days in advance they have to come, all that kind of stuff? Or is there a lot more in here that we don't have now?
So, good question. I mean, I think a lot of this is things that we're doing, it's just not documented in detail.
That's what I figured.
What we found is we had a lot of, you know, pieces of information that we were, you know, sending out to different groups in a lot of different pieces. Nothing was kind of brought together in a comprehensive document.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
And that was an effort to kind of bring all the things that, you know, the different lists of rules and regs that we were trying to communicate into one comprehensive, you know, rules and regulations policy and document.
Okay.
So, you know, a lot of this is practice that's in place, just not documented.
Yeah.
You know, and then, you know, in some cases, you know, we are trying to make an effort, in particular for the outside organizations that are interested, to try to give us some proper notice. But we, it's a little bit, you know, greater deadlines than what we have now. But I think we, in any case, we tried to put some language in there that gave us the flexibility that could be waived or that, you know, exceptions can be made at the discretion of the superintendent.
I think that's important, that we have flexibility and use common sense. Obviously, the policy is important and the regulations, but in some cases, we have to maybe give somebody a pass.
So we...
I have two other questions. One other question, one comment. On the fees, I see the gym, new high school, middle school, each half. So I'm trying, so that's when we divide the gym in half, and you could have two groups on two different sides, and they each, it's thirty dollars for each side.
Or even the same group.
No, yes. So it'll be sixty dollars if the same group is in there using, so it'll be basically sixty dollars for use of the gym if they're using both, both sides, right?
For hours.
Yes, that's correct. Okay. And then the other thing with the gym, though, I don't, maybe I don't see anything in here that if they're using the gym as for a game, so if they're using the whole gym, is that still sixty dollars? In other words, if they're using the whole gym? I don't see that in here.
I would think if you're using both halves, it would be sixty dollars.
So someone comes in, the travel basketball on Sundays, and they play the full court.
Mm-hmm.
Is that still sixty dollars because they're using both halves, or is that a different price? Because they're using the competition court versus...
Versus both half sides.
Yeah.
I think our intention was that it would be the sixty dollars.
Okay.
An hour.
I maybe...
Sixty dollars an hour for a four-hour minimum, right?
Yeah, it's four-hour minimum. So sixty dollars within that four-hour timeframe.
But that should, I think that should be on here. That should be clarified, that if you're using the competition court, it's sixty dollars an hour.
Right.
You should add a line.
Yeah. And then the other question I had is, I noticed we didn't go up on the auditorium, which kind of surprised me. But we did add this...
Didn't we?
No, we stayed at two hundred, but we added this new auditorium performance at three hundred dollars. So I was kind of surprised that we didn't go up on the auditorium fee.
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry.
That was, looking at the gym, the auditorium spaces around in Readings is less than that.
Okay, yeah.
So, you know, we never got anybody...
No, we never got anybody, no.
They'd go to Reading first.
Yeah.
But now we're in, basically in competition with Reading. But now we're in, basically in competition with Reading. We're still more-
That's what I was going to ask, if that was pretty much what the surroundings-
It was. Okay. That was one area where we were actually very competitive with.
Okay, and I think in the area of the gym also, I think we had an early discussion that we were trying to hold the fees down for the, for the gym rates, at least initially and reevaluated.
Initially, that's the goal. Yeah, getting back to our objectives.
As long as you add that separate line in there, so if, and then my comment is, I would strongly recommend that you offer a session or two, an orientation session for local sports groups to come in and you can spell us out to them and let them ask you questions, because there's a lot in this document. And I think that might avoid some confusion down the line where someone calls up because they follow the same procedure as the last 10 years and then they're told, oh, no, you can't do it that way now, you have to do this and you have to have insurance. I think if we met with, if you, Michael, and I don't know who else, met with those groups, maybe it's Wayne and you and Maggie-
Sure, yeah.
-met with those groups to, to give them an orientation of this, that might be helpful.
It's a great idea. I think we can-
I mean, it also might be an interesting meeting, but since we're holding the line on the gym costs, I think that this should be received favorably because you're getting incredible facilities for about the same price that-
We're going to get some feedback, obviously, and we'll get feedback from the basketball. We're trying to accommodate the community here, is what we're trying to do and make it reasonable. Right. So, the only, one more question, we'll move on. Mike, on page three under the permit process, number one, people outside, groups outside of North Reading can apply to use our facilities, right?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, so that they can apply, it doesn't have to be somebody from North Reading.
Right.
And I think it clarifies that somewhere else down there. It says all other out of town groups that comply with North Reading's school committee policies, so-
Right.
I just wanted to make sure in that number one, that we were open to a dance studio in Wakefield or Reading using the auditorium.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's a great job.
Do I have one other thing?
Yeah.
This might be just an error. On the bottom of the revised policy, there are some dates. I don't understand what those mean. It says first reading, June 11th, 2012, revised June 25th, 2012, on the first page of the revised policy. I don't know what those dates are.
Mr. Chair, those are dates from the, if you take a look at the old policy, which is, just precedes, they weren't at the bottom, but as you know, on policies, those are the dates that have been identified as first readings and approved policies in the past.
So those are just moved down below the new-
Right.
They'd be added to them.
And we'll format this to replicate the other policies.
So what we're doing now is KGA, are is both the policy and the regulations attached?
K, KGA is the policy.
Right.
That's the first page.
Right.
And then KGA are the regulations.
Right, okay, but it's designated on one, on the front page of the policy, is that correct?
So KG-
Look at the top of the page one.
Yeah. It's KGA.
It just says KGA.
Okay, KGA, okay. All right.
So I'll move to approve first reading of policy, where is it?
It's KGA.
A, with whatever, with-
Attached regulations, KGA.
Amendments we made tonight. And with, yeah, yes, and with attached regulations, KGA dash R, including amendments that were suggested tonight by the school committee.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Webster and a second by Mr. Bowles. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Karen.
Yes, I understand the thing about the dates, but I would prefer on all draft policies this substantially modified, this is almost like an entirely new policy, not to have dates in case this gets disseminated. Dates shouldn't be put on until we're well past the approval days, just, it's just-
Not sure I follow you on that.
So right now it's this first reading, this is substantially very different from this two line thing.
Yeah.
And this doesn't have dates on it, so I would just want to be very careful that we don't label something that looks like a policy that's been accepted and, you know, a hundred years ago.
Right, don't have dates until the end.
Which is why we should just have a-
Until we've approved it at second. Okay.
Yeah, until the second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve our first reading and a second. Any further discussion? Karen, none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of five to none.
Thank you.
Well done.
Well done.
It's amazing. Breathtaking.
We had a second policy on, and Janine.
Thank you.
The, the second policy we had on is dealing with the social media and I know Karen and Patrick Daly have been working on that and I think you're looking for a bit more time in our line.
Actually, you should ask Cliff and Janine what they plan to do because I, I just presented it to them, so.
Okay, so, go ahead, Cliff.
We sat down with Patrick Daly and went through the policy that we had worked together on, that we provided something and Karen had provided something and Patrick Daly sat down with us and went through some of that. And the suggestion he made was that we go back to the administrative council and get their comments on what they are doing now.
Yes.
And so that we, we don't have a policy that is mixed up with what's actually happening.
Right.
And, and we thought that that was a very worthy effort to go through, so.
So we're going to work on that first.
We're in a little delay mode.
Okay.
Don't worry about it, it's coming.
All right, so we're going to postpone first reading on that. Okay? All right, next to the agenda, we have minutes from April regular meeting, April 28th, 2014. Anybody want to make a motion to approve or not?
I just have one question on the second page, on the discussion with the Eleanor Dell donation to the schools, Eleanor Dell Trust. It says a check in the amount of $640,000. Was that the amount of the check? Because I, I thought the check was 625 and there was going to be a separate 15,000? Or if the check was 640, only 625 is going to establish the scholarship?
I think it was 625 and 15.
Correct. So that should be 625, right?
Yes.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to approve?
So move.
All right, Mr. Webster came in first, the motion to approve, and Mr. Bowles second in that motion. Any further discussion? Karen, none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of five to none. Budget update, we don't have any at this time? Okay, and we don't have any staffing changes at this time?
Correct.
We do have some donations?
Yes.
Okay, and I think the first donation's from the Middle Sextus Attorney, Marion Ryan's office. It's a donation of 500 alls to help fund the school, cost of the school's sponsored substance free post prom and post graduation events, and that's a good cause. And I'd like a motion to accept with gratitude the 500 all donation. So move.
Second.
Okay, I think I got Janine under the wire there. So we've got Cliff with the motion, Janine with the second. Any further discussion? Karen, none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of five to none. And then we have a second donation from the North Reading Community Impact Team, a donation of 1,000 to support the cost of the North Reading High School car crash. We heard our student rep talk about that tonight. I remember the first year we did that, there were people coming out of the senior center and people from all over coming, thinking it was a real accident. They honestly believed that there was, it was an accident in the parking lot, so again, this is a very good cause. So do we have a motion to accept with gratitude?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Janine, to accept the donation from the North Reading Community Impact Team of $1,000. No further discussion, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of five to none. Subcommittee reports. Mel, do you want to do this or you want me to do it?
Athletics?
Yeah, you can do it. Okay. We continue, the athletics subcommittee continues to work and the main item on their agenda, each meeting is the new high school facility, the new gymnasium, and the auxiliary gym, and the workout area, in the fields. Even though the, the fields are down the road another year and a half, we've again gone over the irrigation system, whether or not we're going to be able to irrigate those fields. We talked about the team room and the layout of the team room. The banners, there's been a question about transferring the recognition plaques in the gymnasium, the ones we currently have with all the KPLA championships and the sectional championships. And what Dave Johnson and John Bernard have done is they've gone out and they've gotten a price on some banners that would reflect all of the KPLA champions on a single banner. I think they're gold and green and then they would have a-
It's per team.
What's that?
Per team.
For, for each team. So there's 22 different teams that have won KPLA championships. So each one of these banners, it would say lacrosse, a softball, a baseball on the side, and then it would have the years that they won the championship. And then there's going to be separate ones reflecting the sectional championships, the Eastern Mass championships, and of course, the state championships. They really look nice, I mean, from what they showed us. So the athletics subcommittee, I think, was in favor of moving forward with those. The substantial cost, I think it's 550 dollars per, per banner. How are we paying for that, Mel?
John said he was confident they were going to be able to raise the money through private donations, at least for the first 22 of them.
And the good news is, they want to have it ready and up when the school opens in September. The, one of the things we finalized, I think, was the gymnasium floor diagram. It's a kind of complicated gym, as already been pointed out, there's 14 baskets, which means it's really seven different, separate basketball courts on there. We have three volleyball courts as well, a main court and two side courts. So we're trying to minimize the lines and the confusion. I hope we were able to do that, but we met with Rob Juricilla from Dorn Whittier. We went over it and I think we simplified it down as much as we could and got the court laid out to, I hope, everybody's satisfaction, but it is a fairly complicated layout.
Joe, just to point out one thing, I think as far as the basketball goes, youth basketball's going to be able to split that court up into four different courts for weekend games, probably up to fifth grade, younger kids, yeah, and play four games simultaneously. The four, the four courts are probably bigger than the half courts at the middle school when they break that in half, so it, it looks really good.
Yeah, it's, it's a great setup and all of the baskets are motorized, go up and down, and I believe they're, they're adjusting the four that were not, but they can all go up and down in height as well, all 14. All 14. We talked about, we talked about the pros and cons of seating versus sodding, the new practice field and the softball field. Of course, he's not going to come online until 2015, but Marty Tilton was going to get some prices because he feels that sod is going to allow us to use those fields much, much earlier than we would be if we seed them and it would be much more likely that it would take. All that's dependent on irrigation going up there, so we're going to take a look at that. I talked to Marty briefly the other night and he's got some prices for us at the next meeting, so we can take a look at those. And these are things we probably have to bring back to the secondary school building committee. We, again, talked about the new softball field and trying to see what we're going to do about a scoreboard over there. And we did some, we talked about coaches for the, for the fall season for soccer. I think we were looking to add a coach to each of the girls who were soccer.
We said we would look at that at our last meeting and see if we were going to do that.
See if we can squeeze somebody else. It's all due participation. We've got very high numbers of boys and girls coming out for soccer and we're working with two coaches and we may need three. Mel, anything else? Oh, we talked about batting cages. We do have a group coming in, or at least Coach Carey's coming in, the June 17th Athletic Subcommittee meeting to talk to us about portable batting cages located someplace in the gym area. He has a video that he wants to show us. I said, well, we have an open mind and would be more than willing to listen to him at the subcommittee level, so, you know, we'll be seeing that on the 17th of June. I think that was pretty much it. Okay, evaluation subcommittee.
We've already given our reports.
Already, okay, that's good. Policy subcommittee, I think we've already heard most of that too as well. And then Karen, did you have anything on the legislative update?
I think most of you have already received this in, in the mail, the legislative bulletin from MAS, but just to point out, the Senate Ways and Means budget is already out and if you haven't seen it, please do take a look at it. Does increase chapter 70 funding. I tried to find the specific amount for North Reading before I came here and I couldn't find it. I don't know if Michael has seen it, but have you seen the updated local numbers?
I looked at the House Ways and Means, yeah.
I can't remember what it is, but anyways, it's, it's out there, but it's still not final.
It's the same.
It's the same, yeah. Sorry, it's the same.
The increase is going down the districts, unfortunately not us.
Yeah, the only interest, there's two things I think that are interesting in here from my point of view, and please read it. Fully funding the circuit breaker was not expected in the Senate Ways and Means budget and of course, it's, was level funded in the governor's budget and then the House brought it up by about 5 million. It's now at 260, which is the highest it's ever been funded since the inception of the fund. This is very good news for us, so I was very happy about that. Homeless transportation is also somewhat elevated from the House budget, which is helpful. The rest of this is uninteresting, except that there will be a new unfunded mandate. Interesting thing about substance abuse-
Stay seated, Cliff, stay seated.
Yes, everyone hold your breath. So DESE and Public Health are going to be putting together a model policy around the implementation of evidence-based substance abuse prevention curriculum for grades five to 12. Whenever I see this stuff, it's like the last page of every, everything and yet this scares me. So I'm just telling you now that it's another thing for us to do, coming soon to the unfunded mandate bulletin.
Karen, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, just quickly, as NorCam had a meeting, but it was, the main focus was, which was